I need that call. I'm going to put it on the phone.
I'll be sitting there tomorrow until October.
Except for, I think, seven.
It is 6:00 PM on this December 11th. I'll call our town council meeting to order. Recognize there is a quorum present. Welcome those in attendance in person and those who are tuned in online. Thank you for joining us. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Parrott.
Here.
Mr. Yolan.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
All right. It is 6:00 PM on this December 11th. I'll call our town council meeting to order. Recognize there is a quorum present. Welcome those in attendance in person and those who are tuned in online. Thank you for joining us. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Parrott.
Here.
Mr. Yolan.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
All right. Next, we'll roll into the invocation which I will lead. You're welcome to join if so inclined and not to do so if so inclined. And then we'll follow that up with the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Mr. Reed. All right. Thank you. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, declaration of personal interest. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a declaration of personal interest concerning the agenda at this time? Not hearing any. Mr. Davis, I believe we moved you on the employee recognition for 25 year anniversary. We've got five individuals, so you're going to move to the front.
I'm going to try out the new microphone and see if it works. I'll have to talk right into it. I'm going to, um, I'm going to call on each individual that is here. We have five with 25 years of service. And then I'll do the ones that could not be here tonight after the ones that are here. Jeremy Mahan will come up with me. Jeremy first began with the town in 1996, June of 1996, as a laborer two for Public Works, working under Mike Gaines in a concrete crew. And then he thought he might want to do, I guess, something else for a little bit in 1999. And it only left for a short stint. He realized he needed to come back home in August of 99. And so then he was a equipment operator. And then most recently, he's been a foreman since 2002 in our, in our Department of Public Works. He officially celebrates his 25th anniversary. Obviously, he has a few more years, but we do 25 consecutive. So he's got more than 25 total, but this is the consecutive 25. And I would, I would say that he's one of the key people, especially as we have some newer folks coming in to Public Works and being able to train them, similar to how Mike Gaines trained him of, of being able of, of how to determine to fix our water and sewer problems when they're in maybe not so deep hole and sometimes a really deep hole. So I want to thank Jeremy for his service to the Town of Farmville.
Thank you, Brad.
Big Ed's coming up. Ed Elliott started actually part-time as a laborer one in 1998 in our sanitation departments for Public Works. And then in May of 1999, he became a full-time employee. And then beginning, he was promoted to a laborer two. And he's devoted his, his career here to the Town of Farmville. And, uh, you know, he's, he's one of those that you can count on every time that you need him. And so I want to thank Ed for everything that he does in our Public Works Department as well and congratulate him on his 25 years. Albert Babbert. Albert began working for the town in June of 1999 as a full-time dispatcher and then in January of 2002 as a police officer. Albert had, was promoted to corporal in 2011, then promoted to criminal investigator in 2015, where he still currently holds that position. Albert had, uh, held a unique position in the police department as being one of the first original bike, uh, officers that we had and working also as an animal control officer in the past. And so that's making him a very adaptable employee. I would tell you, Albert's part of a, a strong group of criminal investigators that we have here in the Farmville Police Department. Each one of them work well with one another and they work as a team. There's going to be a day, unfortunately, where all of them are going to reach that ripe old age of, uh, well, it's not old in BRS. You're still kind of young when you leave. But, uh, that opportunity, and we can only hope, and I know that the people in there will, that share that experience and knowledge to, so that we continue that way. And Albert's one of those people. So thank you, Albert. Two, um, individuals that couldn't be with us this evening. Crystal Barton has 25 years of service. She's actually in training. She began as a part-time employee in February of 1999, working both with the police department as a dispatcher and Public Works as in a supply room assistant. You know, I've seen this before. There's a lot of employees that started off somehow in the supply room and then ended up other places throughout the organization when they first got here. Uh, there's a few that have done that. Uh, she became a full-time dispatcher in July of 99 and about a decade later, a senior dispatcher. And then she was a communications operator too. She's been a shift supervisor. She's been acting communications manager and obviously now she is our communications manager. Crystal earned the NEP, which is Emergency Numbers Professional Certification through NINA, National Emergency Numbers Association. It's an esteemed organization dedicated to advancing excellence in 911 field and is currently in Jacksonville, Florida, pursuing another certification. That's where she is. Center Manager Certification Program. So her commitment to, uh, her field, but also to the town, uh, is, is strong. And so we appreciate what she does for us as well. And last but not least, Sandra Stutler, yeah, Stutler, began working for the town in 1999 as a trainee in the wastewater plant. And in 2000, she became a class four operator. And then in 2001, she got her class three certification as an operator, which is the license that she holds today. And, uh, you know, that's a core group of people. They, they work really closely together down there. There's only five or six of them total. And, uh, they, they, they don't deal with the best, um, things every day sometimes, especially in the summer. The smell might get to you. But, uh, she and the others work as a team and she's an important part of our organization as well. So congratulations to her.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. One of the things I've always loved about this town is how much appreciation and respect not only does this body, but this administration and the, and more importantly, the town residents have for, uh, the, the folks who are employed here. It's one of the, the things that always warms my heart when I'm walking around town is to hear how much appreciation the citizens have for, uh, Public Works, public safety, all the folks who are employed, uh, here at the Town of Farmville. And, and so just want to make sure, uh, put that out there. We appreciate you and thank you very much for your service here.
Next up is a update from the Prince Edward County Administrator, Mr. Doug Stanley.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dr. Davis and staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Congratulations to those 25-year employees. It's great. It really, it's a testament to the strength of the organization that you can keep people around for that time. So congratulations on that. A few things I want to hit, um, on the, um, report that's coming around. The county's first annual household hazardous material collection day was held on October 19th. I want to thank Scott and, um, for making available the, the parking lot out back. And we received very positive feedback from the public with a total of 91 vehicles bringing material to be disposed of. Highlights include the collection of 11 crates, um, filled with paint, 195 gallons of pesticide, nine 55-gallon barrels of oil and fuel waste. Uh, we're planning hopefully to be able to do that event again this coming fall. Um, and we'll continue to monitor as long as it's being utilized. The goal is to keep this stuff out of our landfill. And, um, so it's, it costs a lot, but at the end of the day, it's, it's better for the environment and it was really seen to be embraced by the citizens that came out. So we appreciate that. In collaboration aimed at addressing food insecurity in our region, the Piedmont Health District faces Hunters for the Hungry, Feed More, Prince Edward County Extension, and the Prince Edward County Cannery partnered to produce 800 quarts and 150 gallons of venison stew back in November and faces distributed that through their network. So it was a great opportunity to work with the local community to help feed the hungry in Prince Edward and Farmville. Our general reassessment, which obviously impacts the town, field work's been completed for parcels, mobile homes, yellow tags, building permits, new construction inspections and all residential field reviews. They're a little bit behind on their data entries, so we've gotten a three-month extension. Uh, we're looking at reassessment notices being mailed after Christmas. Uh, we didn't want to send it out mid-December and have to deal with that. All of us had to deal with that over the holidays. But, uh, the process, uh, appeal hearings will be held in January. That's for the Board of Assessors, which will be handled by Lomper Ains. And the county attorney, again, has filed for the extension. We would anticipate the Board of Equalization to hold hearings beginning in April. So we'll keep you posted if there are any changes to that schedule. Uh, we've completed our SLF landfill construction, um, which will provide another 10 years of operational capacity at the landfill and that takes care of, uh, Farmville town residents as well. So we've got plenty of space out there. We've got 500 acres, but you have to keep modifying and, and updating your permit, expanding that sales to be able to accommodate the materials. So we're in pretty good shape there. The elementary school project, students moved into modular learning cottages on November 7th. A groundbreaking for the project was held on the 18th. Based on the current schedule, the renovation project should be completed in the spring of 2027. The first thing you're really going to start to notice here with the construction is they'll be tearing down two of the buildings out there probably in early January. They've got to do a little bit of remediation work before they can do that. Dispatch, we look forward to continued discussions regarding the consolidation of the sheriff's office dispatch center with the town's 911 center. I know I'm working with, um, Scott and staff on, um, sample MOA. We'll hopefully be able to send a draft of that over. Y'all can start reviewing that and looking at the proposed budget with the upcoming budget year. And hopefully that'll be one of the things we can talk about at our joint meeting on January 16th. Public Safety Radio System Project, uh, we've completed the detailed design review phase and the tower site equipment's been ordered. Portable radio equipment will be ordered by the end of the month. Uh, we're working on tower lease agreements. We actually tabled one of the actions last night to make sure we can get, uh, the best deal possible. We're going to have to rent some space on a couple towers. So we're trying to make sure we get, um, as, as low of lease price as we can because we're all paying for that. The Regional Economic Development Organization, which will be VARITA, Virginia's Heartland Regional Economic Development Alliance, um, has been stood up and created. Uh, we are actually, I'm on the selection committee for the executive director. Uh, we've, uh, put out and asked for, you know, people interested. We've reviewed initial applications and hopefully we'll be setting up interviews, uh, the first round of interviews in early January. So this will include six of the seven counties and not Amelia, um, in the region and will be there to help promote economic development, uh, in not only a county, which includes the town. So hopefully that'll be another resource to help everybody, uh, promote our community. And just lastly, we've got some projects, um, in the corridor that'll be wrapping up in January or February, including the Five Pillars meets, Wawa, the Flagstop Car Wash and Harbor Freight. All of them are moving along, um, pretty well and we appreciate, uh, the town working with us on providing water and sewer, public utilities to serve those sites. And, um, you know, we're excited about getting them completed and wrapped up. Just lastly, we're probably 75% done with the, um, draft of the comprehensive plan. The next step will be to schedule a public draft review and open house probably in early 2025 at the museum. And I'll make sure Scott has a, a link to that so we can share that with council if y'all have any questions. You're always welcome to attend those as well. So with that, happy holidays and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for county administrator?
Yes. Question on the 460 intersection with Third Street. What's going to make it stronger for the next time?
You know, obviously I think the fact, and one of the things we're putting in our plan is to, um, to make that an urban development area. That's one of those things that gets you more points when you go get scored by VDOT. Developing the hip part, the data center part would be a big help for that. Because right now, um, you've got to score well either from a, you've got to have a lot of accidents and fatalities or you've got to have a lot of economic development potential to score well through the smart scale process. Unfortunately, it was one of the lowest scoring projects through the last smart scale round. So we're, we're hoping to get this raise grant to be able to generate some additional data to help us support it. But, um, you know, when you go out there and you see fully loaded dump trucks making U-turns in the middle of 460 because they can't, they can't go west from that intersection, it's a problem. It's a problem. And, uh, I think we're just going to have to keep plugging at it. But, you know, the cost keeps moving. You know, it's 30-plus million dollars. And certainly nothing's going to happen local. We're going to need some significant state funding to be able to make that a reality. But I appreciate the town's always been cooperative, writing letters of support whenever we apply for grants and things. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Appreciate you. Uh, next up on the agenda is our public hearing regarding resolution number 2024-12-01, conditional use permit to allow a restaurant and mobile, uh, food truck at the intersection of Griffin and Redford. Do we have anyone signed up for that, Ms. McKay?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. We'll close that public hearing and open up our public comment period. Public comment period is for, uh, general items of concern for the town. Uh, you have three minutes. Please state your name, uh, and your, uh, address when you come up and, uh, address the body. Ms. McKay, with anyone signed up for public comment period?
No, sir.
All right. Well, anybody in the audience wish to jump up onto the microphone? Not seeing any. We'll close public comment period. Next up is the consent agenda. You have the draft minutes of the November 6 regular council meeting before you. If there are no changes to be made, do I hear a motion to, uh, accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, next up is the finance report, October and November finance reports. Ms. Julie Moore.
Good evening. Um, you have the October, November reports. For the ABM project, we earned $16,014 for the month of October and $11,390 for November. As I've mentioned in the past, this is going to go towards future project, I mean, future payments we have to make on the project. Um, and, but I'd like to note that we've made our second payment on the ABM project, so that money is starting to dwindle. So that's going to be less, um, income that we earn on it. For October, we earned $16,026, um, at VIP and we earned $15,131, um, in November. For the sweep accounts, we earned $8,615 in October and $8,714 in November. For LGIP, we earned $35,662 in October and $33,562 in November. So in total, for October, we earned $60,303 and for November, we earned $57,408. Any questions on those reports?
Any questions on the reports? Not hearing any.
Okay. And I also would like to give you an update that we got our billings out yesterday. Yay! But I want to say that, there, there's always a but. So this billing that you got has more days on it than what it normally has. For example, my bill had 10 extra days because my first one was, um, the last time it was read was October 11th. So you would have expected it to have been read on November 11th, but it was read on November 22nd. So that meant that my bill was higher than this, than the flat amount because regardless, if you only use 1,500 gallons or less, then you still pay $38. It doesn't matter if you only use 200 gallons, you're going to pay $38. But because it had more days, that meant that the usage went up. So we're looking, um, to see an average of what those went up for everybody. If they were normally a standard person who only paid the minimum of $38 every, um, month, we're going to look and get an average and it's probably going to be $8 to $10. So then for the December bill, even though it's going to be only three weeks instead of four weeks, you're not, you, you as a citizen are not recapping that extra money you paid in November because you have that mandatory $38. So we're going to give everybody a discount and it's going to be between $8 and $10 on your December bill, which will go out at the end of this month. So that if you look at them side by side, they will net together as break even. But if not, then you're not being really fair to the citizens because of the timing of how all of this worked. So we just wanted to let you know that. Do you have any questions on that?
The eagle-eyed accountant in my household will be happy to hear that.
Okay. Good.
Did you say the discount is just for the minimum users or is it going to be?
Everybody's going to get, but it's going to be just a set amount. And we're going to look, because I want to make, I want to get a bunch of, of them to see what's the best amount. But I think the range is going to be eight, between $8 and $10 is what the, um, discount's going to be.
Any additional questions for Ms. Moore? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We've got the October, November finance reports. Do I hear a motion to accept the finance reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, we have no old business, which is strictly new business at this, uh, meeting. First item up is request approval of resolution number 2024-12-01 concerning the conditional use permit on Griffin Boulevard, Redford Street. Any additional information at this time, Mr. Davis?
Uh, just whoever makes the motion, uh, uh, that would say, uh, request an approval of resolution 2024-12-01, um, also add that, uh, Mr. Sprague would have a one-time amendment with no, uh, fee application. No fee to his application to amend it if in the future.
I'll make that motion to approve resolution number 2024-12-01 with amendment to, no fee. One time, no fee.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional, uh, discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Parrott.
Yes.
Mr. Yolan.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mrs. Amos.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next bit of new business is request approval of updated employee policy and procedures handbook. This was also discussed in our last work session. Any updates there?
No.
Uh, do I hear a motion on the employee policy and procedures handbook?
Make a motion, we approve the updated employee policy and procedures handbook?
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Parrott.
Yes.
Mr. Yolan.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mrs. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Next bit of new business is also from the work session, request approval of updated pay and classification plan. I hear a motion on the updated pay and classification plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Parrott.
Yes.
Mr. Yolan.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mrs. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. And last up is a bit of formality, uh, requesting authorization to advertise 2025 town council meeting dates.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Uh, any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Yolan.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mrs. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Parrott.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. And as a reminder as well, that we will not have a work session in January as it falls on the first, uh, but we will have our regular scheduled council meeting on the 8th in January. Uh, moving to town manager's report. Mr. Davis.
Mayor, members of council, a few items. The developer that has purchased, uh, the former location of Ken's Car Coop has filed for demolition of the building and an ENS and stormwater permit. Uh, so that project should be moving forward here soon. Uh, Ben Lapp's housing development has been issued a stormwater permit from the county and so, uh, you should see some progress on that in the future as well. Still have to do, uh, building permits for each one that's done, but a lot of the infrastructure will probably be done, obviously, uh, before that. And on that note, uh, Mr. Hardy, to answer your question from last week, uh, if the main line is off of Lane Street, we make the tap, uh, from that, from that main line and then the line, so that a line can come off of that to go down whatever name of his street will be. But they, they are, the contractor is responsible, uh, for running the line and doing the taps to each residence. But it has to be based on our specs. Like they have to have the pipe that we have and, uh, how they do it is to our specs.
Right. And, and so what you're saying is, is we'll do the tap and bring it across the road or we'll just dig up? we'll just dig up and put a tap and we'll bring it across the road? Okay, thanks.
We do that original tap. The rest is on them. And then when it's over...
Because we'll have a shut-off or something right there?
Then when it's over, we take over. So we're responsible for the pipes after that. Comes into our system. We're waiting to receive bids on the wastewater plant upgrades, which should be before the end of this month so that we can award it, which, remember, convert our chlorine disinfection to UV disinfection and cloth disc filtering. The Planning Commission will be hearing soon a conditional use permit and a subdivision application on a piece of property that's beside the Zaners that live on Perry Drive right at Merrywood Farms for a developer that wants to develop a storage unit facility on that acreage. Dominion Energy is seeking a conditional use permit as well. They'll be going to Planning Commission. They're going to enhance their portfolio of land, but towards the Millwood roadside, so where the CPA offices and that double-wide and that area, they'll be taking that over. And so they'll be enhancing their business in that area. Our water meter project is on hold, well, not hold. We're waiting on more meters and supplies for installs to arrive, and so, and then that project will be complete. As of now, we have approximately 200 meters left of approximately 2,800 to 3,000 total meters, so it's about 90% probably complete at this point. And one last is our employee Christmas luncheon is tomorrow from 11:32 at the Sports Arena, so we hope you all will join us to celebrate our employees during this holiday season. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'll move around the dais. Mr. Hardy?
I'm good.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes, I would like to see, those of us that are going to attend VML Day, I think it's January the 30th, to try to push harder for, to help the county to get this intersection done between Third Street and 460. I don't know what we can do, but I guess we can go to our representatives and push a little harder to see what can be done, because it's been a long time coming, and it doesn't make sense for trucks to have to go, anybody has to go to the end of Third and have to go to 460 and make a U-turn to go back the other way. Thanks.
Mr. Yolan?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Parrott?
I guess I'd like to ask a question. Can I expect a report in January on Hurt Providence?
That's a goal. We can probably, it's not a written report. It's modules that they've, it's an Excel spreadsheet that will then, I've seen the Excel spreadsheet. I haven't gone all the way through it, because there's like, I can't tell you how many lists of manholes and pipes, and it's a long, I'll send it to you. It's in draft form right now, but it just, it tells you the type of pipe and those types of things, but all that, the whole utility asset management plan is so that it's tied to our GIS. So all that data of what they've gotten is going to be uploaded so that we can click and see where it's located and what it is. So that's the information. I'm not, I don't know what type of report we would give.
I guess what I would like, if possible, would be like an interpretation of what they have found and what needs to be addressed, what doesn't need to be addressed, or if it's too early for this type of conversation, just say so. But I'm interested in learning what their findings have been, if that's possible.
It may cost us a little more, but we can do that. For them to actually go into detail and share, I mean, the goal is, is that it's supposed to be a tool for us to use to do those projects and start prioritizing them based on the age of the pipe and those types of things.
I think plugging it into, once you plug it into the GIS, that you should be able to get pretty readily available information about when things are going to come up for, like, need-based, as far as the asset management is concerned.
The goal was to go by age and if the deterioration or not of it.
I was hoping that possibly that that would also lead us to when we address the roundabout, to where we could tie in and try to piggyback off of that at the same time in order to be able to improve that area while we are tearing it up to provide that roundabout.
Yeah, I've spoken to this before, so we would have to coordinate, when they put out their, they're going to do their project, and we would have to then attempt to put out our bid in hopes to get the same contractor, since they're here to do the project, which they may do, and the bid may be better, because they're already here. But yes, we can prioritize that so that when that part is taken up, that then we can move forward with each direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
Just wish everybody a happy holidays.
Mr. Reed?
I'd do the same thing. Wish everybody a happy holiday.
Ms. Amos?
Nothing.
I'll be brief, because I know there's a couple folks need to get out to some other events. Thank you to Police Department and all the Public Works folks. I know we had the Christmas tree lighting, we had the parade, both of which put a little extra strain on those departments during this time. Both fantastic events, and we appreciate y'all looking out for us, keeping us safe, and making sure folks crossing the street were safe, et cetera. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody. It's a great opportunity to bundle up with those you love. Make sure you dole out hugs liberally, and I would like to say to our regular attendees here in the council chambers, I appreciate you. There's a few of you who regularly attend, and I'm grateful that you do. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I mean, I read, what did I read? I read somewhere that there's a new VML magazine coming out, and the quote from a mayor was, "I need you to stand in the corner in a suit and make the rest of us look good, but don't talk too much." We appreciate you, and everybody have a happy holidays and stay safe. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Motion in second, all in favor?
Ah.
All right, those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.